So I will call the meeting to order and welcome everyone. Those who are watching us live and those who will be watching at a later time. As we are recording at this time. Do we have any one Paulette signed up for comments?
No, we don't.
Okay, then I'll skip that little speech. Please read with me the mission for the Marshalltown Community School District. We develop learners who have the knowledge, skills, and positive mindset. To successfully pursue a meaningful future of your personalized learning experience. And please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Yes, I have some to the Personnel Consent Agenda, please. We could pull that up, Amy. You'll see two highlighted names on the first page of resignation by a teacher, Katie, at Miller Middle School. She was an English Arts Teacher for us. And then Ivory Jensen, who was a Special Education Para at the high school. And then on page three. The new position in the Transportation Office, the 12-month Administrative Assistant. Catherine Whedon was selected for that role with a start date of July 1st. Those are the additions to the Personnel Consent Agenda that went on this morning.
Okay. Any other additions or corrections?
There are none.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Move, Hightman.
Second, Miller.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, no. The motion carries seven zero. Thank you all. Mr. Sodders.
Hey, everyone. How's it going? I believe in Ann is on now, so we have Ann Jackson tonight. She is an XLP Extended Learning Program Teacher over at Miller Middle School. She has done some pretty extraordinary stuff representing the district in recent years. And she has now added another feather to her hat as far as bringing the University of Iowa. I'm going to make sure I have this name right, University of Iowa College of Engineering Feminineers STEM Program to Miller Middle School. And I just wanted to invite her over tonight. And I think she'll be able to speak to that a little bit and how she applied for that program and what it will mean for our students. So if Ann is able to speak, please tell us more.
I am. Can you hear me okay?
I can.
Great, great. Well, the Feminine program started out, it was really a great collaboration. Jackie Wyatt actually first found the opportunity and forwarded it to Susan Fritzell, who's at the high school. And she forwarded it on to me because it's more geared toward middle schoolers. So the thing that's really great about it is we've noticed in our trends with XLP programming that girls are not choosing our STEM-based activities. So we're hoping that the Feminine program, since it is just for girls, will really pique some interest and maybe approach STEM in a safer space without the boys in the room, so to speak. So they'll feel comfortable to explore some of those options that maybe they had steered away from. So the program begins with a creative robotics. And it's a three-year program. First is Creative Robotics. It has Raspberry Pi. Oh, and now the third one escapes me right now. But so the first year, we're just going to have XLP students do it. But Mr. Glenn and I have talked about figuring out a way to open it up to more girls at Miller. For the first year, anyway, it'll just be the XLP students invited. But hopefully in the future, we'll be able to invite more girls in because this is a need for all of our students. Do you have any questions?
Can you remind me what XLP is?
Yep, XLP is the Extended Learning Program. So it's the district's talented and gifted students, the top 5% to 8% of student body.
Do you have any sense of how many? How many girls do you expect might participate in this?
I'm hoping to get 25 to 30 the first year. And that's with seventh and eighth grade students. So in my program at Miller, I have generally 25 to 37th grade male and female students and then 25 to 30 male and female eighth grade students. So I'm hoping between the seventh and eighth grade groups, I can get 25 female students participate in feminines. So I'll be heading to University of Iowa for two days of professional development this fall. Where they'll teach us about the program and implementation. And they provide all of the materials that we'll need for the programming so that we'll be able to bring it back to Marshalltown and implement it. Another great thing about the program is that they provide a mentor, University of Iowa Mentor Student for us. And it's just another way that girls see successful women in STEM careers and STEM learning fields.
Cool.
Yeah, we're excited to get started. And so we'll go through the program this year and then there'll be some type of competition in the spring where I'll take students to University of Iowa and we'll see what other schools have put together. And maybe in the spring, I can bring students to another school board meeting. And you can see something a lot more interesting with what they create than just me talking about the program.
It will be a wonderful opportunity for our girls at Miller.
Yeah, I'm very excited about it. And I'm super thankful just for the support of the administrators. Mrs. Wyatt for passing on the opportunity and then Mr. Glenn for supporting it at Miller. So and I'm sure Mrs. Kel too, once she arrives.
Other questions for Ann?
Yeah, I'm sorry if I missed it, but how many girls are we targeting for that?
I'm hoping to get 25 to 30 girls in this first cohort. And like I said, they'll just be XLP students this first year. But Mr. Glenn and I are kind of collaborating to see how we can open this up to more students in future years. Because this is a need for all of our female students. And it would be a great opportunity for any of them to enhance their learning beyond what's done in the classroom.
Definitely. Thank you.
Yep.
Congratulations, Ann, and thanks for sharing.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having me.
Moving on to the consent agenda. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes for the June 1st meeting? Any items of note other than what you've mentioned in personnel, Nora?
No, ma'am.
Looking at interagency agreements and contracts. We have a letter of agreement for the licensure program with Walden University in order to provide field experiences. For open enrollments, we have three out. Are there any items of note in the bills, Paulette?
No, thank you.
Are there any questions in the monthly financial report? We have some obsolete equipment to dispose of. The color guard uniforms are considered to be obsolete and they will be published in the local newspaper in accordance with board policy for sale. Are there any questions on any of the items in the consent agenda? May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Don't move, Paulette.
Second, Hernandez.
But Guinness Hernandez, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, no. The motion carries seven zero. We have no public comments, so let's move on to education. And the first item under education is the health report by Stacy.
Okay.
Hi, Stacy.
Hi. I'm glad to be here tonight to present the annual health report. This school year started off pretty much as usual. You know, August, September, we didn't see a lot of illness. And then, and starting in October, we did see some increase in illness in our district, staff and students. And actually, all the way, starting October through February, we started to see some increases. It was never anything specific, but you know, some flu-like, some GI. We did have three of our five elementaries report 10% absence of students to the state, which really is an unprecedented. But it did seem that we did have a little bit of an uptake of illness during that October through February. And then in the end of February, you know, the Iowa Department of Public Health and the CDC started to notify us and give us more information about the coronavirus. And so as school nurses, we started to do some further screening of students and staff that would come into our offices with fevers. And you know, we would ask a little bit about travel and possible exposure. And then, of course, we went on spring break and then ended up not returning with our students. And then on March 11th, the World Health Organization declared the pandemic. And on March 16th, the school board, you guys approved our pandemic, our infectious disease plan. And so we've kind of come a long ways from our school closure to widespread community involvement of the coronavirus in Marshalltown. Which is, it has affected our students, their families, and many of our staff as well. And here we are in June and we're moving forward. I collaborate closely with, oh, you know what? I really haven't moved on that yet. I'm kind of just giving this brief little synopsis. And then I'm going to, and then I'll jump into my screen there. Sorry, Amy, I'm probably confusing you here. So as I said, moving forward, I am working closely with Pat Thompson with Marshall County Public Health. She is monitoring closely, you know, the activity of the coronavirus in our community, watching those numbers. Then most recently, you know, two weeks ago, the governor said it was, we could go ahead and move forward with softball and baseball. So I worked with Ryan Isgrig and the coaches. Our district was able to purchase thermometers. We provided screening tools. And so, and some great education for our players and our coaches in regards to what to watch for so that we could get back, you know, return to play and be safe and continue with our mitigation strategies. And so far, I think that is going well in our first games tonight. So we hope that goes well also. And I'm also working as part of the Return to Learn Team. It's a great team of people working together to plan for our academic year 2021. And just looking to make sure we continue with the health and safety of all of our students and staff moving forward. And now I'm going to go ahead and start here with my slideshow. Just briefly, looking at our health office staff from the past year. We did have two new nurses that were with us the school year. One at Fisher Heather Van Buren, and then we also had Nancy Pinz from Woodbury. And we will have a change for next year, if you want to move that slide forward. We have Cherry Edwards retired at Anson and we have Brenda Minarha. I know I probably did not say that correctly, who will be joining us at Anson. And we very much look forward to her coming onboard with our nursing staff. And then we also are losing our health aide at the high school, Michelle Brown. And we are currently looking still for a new health aide to join me there. Looking at our nursing services, nothing really has changed here. Pretty much the same. We provide the same services. I just had to look at, let's see, 1, 2, 3, 4. I think it's the fifth tab there, monitoring for epidemics and pandemics. I was going to add on there into these outbreaks, monitoring the health of the overall population and connecting with public health officials. Obviously, that was kind of a standout for us the past school year. And moving forward, that will obviously be a large part of our role in the health offices as we plan for our return to learn. And then we can move up a little further here at the other school nurse roles. Those again have not changed. I asked all the nurses in our buildings to share with me how they participate in their particular buildings. And they're very involved with the health curriculum to, you know, just our general taking care of our students in our offices and providing well and sick care. And obviously, some things are going to change a little bit more as we move forward. We will be, you know, doing a lot of screenings, mitigation, and working to keep our students and staff safe as we move forward in this this era of COVID-19. All right, and then we'll move forward here, just looking at some data. So as of 5/27, we had a total enrollment of 5,193 students. And of those, 49% report a health condition. And some of them are multiple. So and I think I've, you know, explained this before. I mean, that is pretty significant. However, some of these health conditions can be something as simple as like a vision concern and they wear glasses. So that's broken down into 49% of our students that actually have a health condition. And then we'll move on to the next slide. We track these health conditions that are recommended by the National Association of School Nurses. We did add to this year anxiety and depression. And as you can see, our numbers are pretty much unchanged from last year. I believe, you know, our anxiety and depression numbers are probably a lot higher than that. Again, we only have the information that is shared with us, you know, as parents register and fill out those health forms. So looking at those numbers, I would say it's a pretty accurate description other than maybe seeing not maybe having all the reports of the anxiety and depression. And again, we track just these specific conditions as those are the ones recommended by the National Association of Nurses to follow. And then the outcome of our health office visits. So from the start of the school year in August until our last day in March, we had 54,306, and that's across the district. That's in all nine of our buildings. 46,191 were back to class and 1,834 were sent home. And we have three that we called 911 or EMS. And as it's already, there's a discrepancy of about 6,000 that are not reported on here. And I can explain that. We have, so back to class, sent home and EMS are the three areas that the National Association of School Nurses advises you to track. We have other options on Infinite Campus such as sent for an office referral, sent to, you know, a doctor's visit. So those are different ones that we do not track, so those aren't captured in these numbers. As well as sometimes if a student is absent from school, if they're not, if that visit isn't taken off, it could also show, it would show, you know, that there was not an outcome of that visit. As well as sometimes, you know, sometimes a nurse may not actually even capture what that outcome is. We do work on that and we stress it each year that it's very important that we capture all of the outcomes so we can get a true reflection of where our students go after they've been in our offices. And then we just look at the number of our health and emergency plans on the next screen. Our 504 plans and our emergency health plans are recorded there. And obviously, based on the population and, you know, the numbers in our schools. You can see, obviously, the high school has the most. But each of the schools have, if you go over it, I think you can see the number. I think it shows how many there are in each building. Oh, it's not showing on there when you do that. Oh, okay. Well, I don't have that number right in front of me. I do have it on a spreadsheet when I made these. But it's clear that we do have several students that we do follow closely with our 504s and our emergency health plans. And those are monitored through, nurses are part of the 504 plans in the buildings as they as they work, each student that has a 504 has a health plan. And that is created by the school nurse and updated annually or as needed, if there are changes in that student's health. And then the emergency health plans, those are the plans that are provided for our students that have seizures, diabetics, students that have anaphylactic reactions. Those are plans that we have in place in case someone, you know, has an exposure to an allergen or has a seizure, obviously, or may experience a low blood sugars. And that's how we track that. And then I'm very proud to show our immunization audit. We had 100% last year for all schools. And so that is, that is an amazing, I haven't seen that in the eight years that I've been a school nurse here in the district. So I was very proud of that. And I do know too, looking, moving forward with our immunizations for this school year, the Iowa Department of Public Health, they're not changing any of the requirements or giving us any. You know, they're not expanding the, you know, the probationary periods for those. So we will, we are going to continue to encourage our parents to, you know, take their kids in to get their immunizations. I know Marshall County Public Health is, we normally do some of that in our schools towards the end of the year, and obviously, we weren't able to do that. But we're looking at some other ways to do that as well, possibly having it, you know, having them go to the public health department, which is currently located at the Great Western Bank. We've also looked at some other options too. And I know that our public health has even worked to the point where they have gone with the school nurse to the students' home to make sure that they get the vaccines that they need and to have the parent there and sign the consent. So we are very fortunate to have Marshall County Public Health to collaborate with us. And obviously, it's reflected in our compliance of our audit. And then, just looking at state requirements, again on that, we have been notified that they're not going to be extending any of the requirement deadlines for us. That our students do still have to have their dental screens, hearing screens, vision screens, and immunization audits. I'm not exactly sure what some of that may look like next year, if depending on, you know, onsite or hybrid or what that will look like for us. But as of this time, they are not changing any of those requirements for us. The IDPH has already notified us of that. And then, the next screen. Oh, our Medicaid claiming for school-based services. We claimed on approximately 87 students this year. And I don't have that total yet for the gross reimbursement. That's still pending. But our nurses do work hard on, you know, collecting and coordinating those claims in our buildings. Our health peers and special ed teachers assist us as well on that. And I'm sure that that number will reflect some good numbers for our district there too. And then, at the end here, I just want to say in conclusion, just a student's health is directly related to his or her ability to learn. And today, our schools contain many students with various physical and mental health diagnosis as well as behavioral and trauma-related problems. These students benefit from having a professional school nurse as part of their health team. We promote the health, wellbeing, academic success, and lifelong achievement of our students. Keeping our students safe, healthy, and ready to learn is the priority of our health offices. And in this time epidemic, our students, families, and staff members are experiencing major effects both physically and mentally. And our health offices provide support and services to assist during this uncertain time. During our closure, I did want to share that our nurses, they actively were in the schools doing the screenings for our essential workers as our, you know, they were in the bus barn with our transportation department, food service, and our maintenance staff performing temperatures and health screens for them, answering questions. We were all part of our support staff at our schools, working with our social workers and our guidance counselors and teaching staff and administrators working with any of our families that had been affected by the coronavirus and making sure they had the health connections that they needed, answering questions, assisting to make sure that they had their meals provided to them. We helped to collaborate with Lynn and her team with that. And I know that our nurses stayed very, very active with their families. I spoke with some of my students on the phone and their parents and their families to answer questions. I still have many of them that contact me that have questions. I know we did some Google meets to work with our students and families as well, assisting with any health questions. And I see that will be a need moving forward as well. Thank goodness for virtual meetings and our ability to be able to communicate with our families and students that way. And that's what I've got. If anyone has any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Well, thank you, Stacy, for bringing that report to us. When you looked at the total number, obviously, that was without three months of school. Can you, can you give us an idea as to how we compared with the number of office visits last year?
Yeah, yeah. And I'm not done there. I think, I mean, it was probably about 18,000 to 20,000 less than last year.
Oh.
Yeah. And I think as well, that obviously, having almost three, you know, three months of school. And another thing that we include in our health visits are, we do health screenings for students as well. You know, the height, weight, and those usually are at towards the end of the school year. So those were not all completed because, you know, obviously, we weren't there. So I think that's reflected in those numbers as well. At the high school, we screen all of our freshmen. And I know that we probably got, we were right at about 50%. So I think that is what I heard from all the nurses, that they would say somewhere, you know, 50 to 25% of their screens were not able to be completed. So we're looking at that for next year to see how we're going to be able to capture that next year, to capture those students that we didn't get screened this year. At the high school, the freshmen are the only ones that we actually do the health screenings for. That's how it has been always in the past, but we are going to try to do that. It's good information to have, so we will, we're going to, we're working on how we're going to be able to capture those students that we didn't, we weren't able to get screened this year. So I think that is, that reflects, you know, a good number of those as well, of those office visits that we're short on.
And in the times that you indicated that nurses made student contacts, called homes, et cetera. Is there any sense of how, what the nurses were doing related to child abuse? Or did we just miss three months of the year that kids could have easily been abused and we never knew about it?
I know. And that is a very difficult subject, I know, during this time. I do not know of any reports that were made from a school nurse during this time. I know that we had, I know that we had students that, I think, you know, we had some students that reached out with questions and concerns that I know nurses were able to answer. But I don't feel that we were, I know that we did not make any reports during that time. And yeah, I know that's what's very difficult when we're not in person there to be able to see those kids. I can tell you though, that it is, again, having that virtual ability. Some of my students that I worry about, not necessarily in regards to, you know, abuse. you know, abuse, but or neglect, but students that I am just, that I felt sometimes mentally, just had a lot of questions for anxiety purposes. And it was really good for me to be able to virtually talk to them through the Google meet and see them and see how they were doing. And I think I probably did that more through the high school than some of the others did. I know the Miller, I think Miller did as well, Christina. So it was good for us to be able to, for the mental health of our students, be able to do those virtual visits too. Yeah.
Other questions for Stacy?
I just have one. Do you, do you have any, any awareness? And you have enough work to do if you, if you don't know the answer to this, but you know how we would compare to like the other school districts in Iowa of our size in terms of the, the kinds of things we're looking at, the severity of illness and the, the number of visits. Do you have any idea?
You know, I don't know for sure. I couldn't give you those statistics right now. I definitely could do some comparisons though. When I have looked in the past, we are, were pretty equal. I would tell you, last year, actually, I think our number of health office visits definitely surpassed some of our similar schools, like I believe it was Muscatine that I compared with. I looked at Mason City. We did have, last year I do know our health office visits were pretty high. As far as our illnesses, I believe we're pretty, you know, like our, our health conditions were pretty comparable with other, with other districts our size.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I just want to thank Stacy for the leadership she continues to provide as the lead nurse in our district. It's been comforting to have her to connect with, especially during this COVID situation. I mean, she, under normal circumstances is a fantastic resource and support for building and district administration. And she's been a real trooper, taking phone calls at your time to address the issues that pop up with COVID.
Thank you.
Thank you for the report, Stacy. Moving on to Sue Kay Hill and the mentor report.
Thank you very much. I also want to introduce Julie Thede, who is, I have been very honored to serve as a teacher leader in the area of mentoring and professional development for our specials classes for the past three years. And I am giving that position up this year and moving back to a classroom, Title I position at Woodbury. So I would like to introduce Julie Thede, who will be joining me in the presentation and she'll be open for some questions at the end of it, if you have any for her. So she's on the, on the slide here as well. The mentoring program, you could, you can begin, Amy. Thank you. Our mentoring program is for our new teachers, whether they are brand new to teaching or whether they are experienced teachers who come into our district. We have three basic goals. One is to establish that welcoming climate and to share those clear expectations of what successful teaching is in Marshalltown. Secondly, we want to establish that habit of professional collaboration that through our PLC program, we have continued through all grades, all levels. So we really get it started here in the mentoring program. And thirdly, we practice, we want our new teachers to practice and become proficient at those skills of self-reflection and, and analyzing what their teaching is so that they can become better teachers in the process. Thank you. Over the past three years, I came on as a full-time release person that worked with the mentoring program. Previously, it had been several people who worked together to carry this on as more of a coach-like situation. But in the three years that I've worked with the program, I really have worked at gathering individual data from our new teachers that looked in the form of conducting three different interviews with them one-on-one during the year. We also provided and changed some of our training options for our new teachers and our second-year inexperienced teachers. We gave them more choices of the types of training that they could work with. We worked with Lisa Wymer from Central Rivers AEA, for example, for our second year and our experienced first-year teachers, providing them some background and different classes on sheltered instruction. And through that, we give them the option of three different courses and they need to select two of them. So they are able to choose what best fits their classroom situation. We also find that some of our teachers really, we just can't have a cookie cutter program to fit every new teacher. So we have designed some individual programs for some of our level three special ed teachers. Stacy, who was on previously, she does a special program for our nurses. Also for many of our counselors, we've, we've provided some different options so that they can become better at their jobs. But we designed something that works better for them than just saying, you need to jump through these hoops to be, to say you've completed our mentor program. Our goal is to make sure that we're providing the best services for those teachers. Even with our classroom teachers and our first-year teachers within our monthly meetings that we hold. This past year, I put in a choice of topics. Maybe they needed to work on classroom management and how to work with students on behaviors. Or maybe they wanted to expand how they worked with families and family involvement. So that we had choice boards that they could select the topics, work with their mentor to explore that topic and to help them with their personal needs of how to be a better teacher in our program. Finally, we, we learned to do things very collaboratively online from March on. For March, April, May, for both our first year and our second year in experienced teachers, we moved to online professional development. We took some of the in-person training that we had and we delivered it in a virtual form and actually got some very nice feedback on it. And we might, Julie might try some of that to a different extent in the coming years. Thank you, Amy. This past year, we did have 62 mentor teams. We had eight teams that were only one semester. We had four teams that those teachers had been hired mid-year, two years ago. And we had four other teams that were hired mid-year this year. So it's a little flexible, I think, when we use our, our full number, we talked about 58, but we had some that were only one semester teams. But again, we had, we met their needs and included them. Next slide, please. Out of that group, we did have 28 first-year teachers. This was their first teaching position that they've ever had. We had 22 experienced teachers who were new to the Marshalltown Community School District. And it was amazing, we had a couple of teachers that were past administrators and they really, that whole group brought excellent experience to our district. And then there were 12 second-year teachers who were in their second year of teaching, second year of the mentoring program and working toward their standard license. Thank you, Amy. When I shared those goals initially, at each, at the end of each year, I have always done a put out a survey for our teachers to reflect on what they gained from the mentoring program and to help shape the upcoming work that we would do. So we took those first three goals that I shared with you at the beginning. We used the Likert scale where four is the high number. I had it separated out, different surveys for our first year and our second-year teacher. As I said, that the, the programs seem to fit the needs of the teachers. And please, if you have any questions, please stop and ask them and interrupt me. That's not a problem at all. So if you'll take a look at those. And then the next slide. The next questions were, how did our trainings help you? We offer three days prior to the school year, a beginning school workshop. It provides to it an orientation to the district, to their school, to their individual assignment and to the community. We also go over district policies and procedures. I found it interesting that our first-year teachers in that middle column, that was one of the lower scores, but I don't know if we can ever prepare those first-year teachers completely to enter that classroom on the first day of teaching. So I know they all wish they had more time to prepare and more time to work with the other professionals in our schools.
Did they have any suggestions for things to include that were not included?
Actually, they did. And, and in the three years that I worked with the program, we did start putting in half, one of the half-days, we had it in their school and the instructional coaches provided building-specific training for teachers in their building. That helped them, number one, make a great relationship with their principal and instructional coach. Number two, they got to take a tour of their building. They got to see how to use the copy machine, where do I park? But more importantly, what is PBIS like in my building? What things do I need to know? How do we recognize students? What, what things are part of the culture and community of our building? So that was one thing. And so that was one of the strong areas that many of the new teachers said that's something we would love to have more of. And even for the coming year, we've made some additional changes where each building will have, or excuse me, our mentee, our mentees will have not only monthly meetings for, in a large group, as a whole group of first-year teachers, but we have cut that down and they will also have an hour of training with their principal and instructional coach in their building. So again, that need for, for feeling that we need some real touch to what is it like in our building? What is the culture like? How can I best fit in? What resources in my building can I use? So we've made some of those changes from hearing what the new teachers, what their suggestions were. Thank you, Amy. And then how was the mentor support system? Again, the, some of the items that were just very highly rated, having that support onsite with their mentors, especially our first-year teachers, really appreciated having an experienced teacher in their building that they could go to, that they could observe and they could have observed them through, we have eight different observations and that they could have those reflective conversations to truly enhance their teaching and to move them from where they started as a teacher to where they want to be as a teacher. Again, our mentoring, mentoring program is not about fixing anyone. It's about helping our new teachers be reflective from the skills that they've gained in school and putting that into practice in the classroom. These were just some anecdotal pieces that we asked, again, continual questions about that. You can take a look at those. And we'll go to the next one, Amy. The mentor relationship was very strong. The next one. What have my students gained? I love that we had more student engagement. I think that that is a key to, to what we do, but also they walked away, the teachers walked away with strategies from classroom management and working with our ELL and some other students where they learned strategies to differentiate their teaching. And the next slide. And finally, this goes back to your question B, what do I need more of? And this has been clear through my survey conversations, one-on-one conversations, that many of the teachers feel that, boy, classroom management strategies are, are a key. Because when they student teach, many times it's much different. They walk into a classroom in the middle of the year where procedures and policies have been already established, and they're also working with an experienced teacher behind them. Again, more time with their building specific work, more practical applications and more scaffolding strategies, which is what we've, we've worked to build our program with. The next slide, please. One of the areas that go back to the strategic plan goal is how we can best hire, train and retain teachers in our system, the best teachers in our system. So we have kept track of retention data through, it was started before I came into the program. So I know that I have data from the last seven years. In 2019 and 20, we hired 50 new teachers. And for various reasons, 70 of those teachers left after their first year with 43 remaining. So that gave us a retention rate of 86% for that one year of students. And the previous year, it had only been 68%. I am not exactly sure what the differences are or, but that's still kind of a piece that we are trying to determine how to best keep and retain the best teachers. If you'll go to the next slide, Amy. Now, we also keep the five-year retention rate. And so from 2015 to 2020, there were 191 new teachers hired. And within their first five years, 72 of those teachers left the district with 119 remaining. Now that is a retention rate of 62.3%. It is an increase of a full percentage point over the previous five years or the five years adjacent from 2014 to 2019. But that's still an area that we wonder what, why are teachers leaving? What can we do to retain those teachers? The next one, yes.
Do you, do you know how that five-year retention rate compares to a statewide average or anything that would give that some context?
Well, I'll come back with, again, these are just teachers within five years. Our overall percentage rate for our entire staff is much higher on an annual and a, and over the five-year span. I know there are statistics that the Department of Ed keeps, but I don't know if they keep it for just the first five years. I know we have retention rates each year and ours is in the 80, high 80%, 86, something in that range. But I don't know if they keep it for during the first five years of employment.
Okay.
Sean, Sean, every winter we have the Iowa School Performance Profile that's released and teacher retention data is one of the data points in there. But as Sue said, it's only tracked year to year to year. And that also includes teachers that leave a building to go to a different building, which if we threw those numbers in, in Marshalltown, we'd have, I wouldn't really want to share those numbers. Because we do, we have a pretty liberal policy about letting teachers transfer to other schools or other positions within the district, if that's what they would like to do and what they're qualified to do. But we don't, I have never seen five-year data. I do know like, and Theron maybe can chime in or be, but at MBEA, they sometimes will share like industry data and what are other companies seeing. Education can kind of compare to them, but not exactly. So we set goals based on these numbers and I'm actually, the next presentation, our TLC program, one of the goals is mentoring and retention.
Thank you. Oh, go ahead.
Paul, Ed Week says nationally, the five-year retention rate is 50, first five years is 56%.
So I know the, the chamber has said for a couple of years that among the problems of, of organizations, businesses and organizations here is that something like 25% of those who work in Marshalltown live someplace else. Do we, do we track anything like that? Do we, here's the shorthand question. Do you have any idea as to whether or not housing is an issue for new hires?
This is, I am actually working on that right now. I bet you I can get that answer here in the next 10 minutes as far as.
Oh, crazy.
Nora, I did take some of the data you shared with me and I believe it's on the next slide. And that And that might answer some of Bob's question, but not completely.
Okay, yeah, I will, um, I can actually give you statistics here too in a minute. How many?
This was, Nora had shared with me um, some data from forty-one teachers who left within their first five years of joining um, MCSD. Now I have to say this, uh, Nora can correct me, but I don't think this was a scientific poll. I think it was voluntary and people could choose more than one choice. They could choose as many choices as figured in their decision to leave. I don't have the answer for you, Bob, on how many teachers live outside the Marshalltown district. I know Nora could probably provide you that, but it is fairly significant. I felt on this sheet, when seven people stated that transportation was their issue and a reason why they left the district, that meant to me that they live out of town and it was the commute that was difficult, not whether they had a good car or not. But to me, that that read that it was most likely the commute, bad weather days, if they were coming from Ames or from Ankeny or Bondurant or Hella or Waterloo, and we've had people from those areas. Um, but again, the the many of them were moving and spouse relocation were were top issues. And those are the statistics. And as I said, Nora can share more. I just took some of the basic data that she provided me with. And um, she in time maybe will share more of that with you.
Dr. Shudi, I believe you have the information of how many staff members live outside the district?
Well, a couple of years ago, um, I think in conjunction with when the city had identified twenty percent of the people that work here not living in the community, uh, we analyzed our employee base. We didn't separate it out, teachers versus other positions, but we were closer to twenty-five percent of our employees live somewhere other than in Marsh Town. Many would live in the surrounding communities, but we had quite a draw from Ames and the Des Moines area as well, and some people that live further away yet. So um, I think housing sometimes is part of the issue or affordable quality housing. I think a lot of times, uh, it's the spouse is work uh, in terms of where they're located. Uh, with a lot of our young people there, you know, if they're in Ames or Des Moines to begin with, sometimes it's hard to uproot them from, you know, the cultural um, and amenities that exist within those communities for young professionals. It's really kind of a lot of different things, but the reality is that, you know, it's a challenge when um, they don't live here in terms of retaining them. Uh, we, they, they receive from the moment they get here through those first three to five years, some high-quality professional development, which provides them with a um, that makes them very marketable to other school districts that don't have similar experiences for their people.
I can tell you quickly off the top, um, it would take a little bit more time to dig into just the teachers, but overall full-time staff, um, twenty-seven point three percent live outside of Marshalltown. Like I said, that's all staff though, not just teachers. All staff twenty-seven point three percent live outside of town.
Thank you for sharing those statistics. Um, can you go to the next slide, Amy, if there's no more questions there? So that's the big question. Where do we go from here? And um, as I said, I am off on a new adventure. Um, I will enjoy being back in the Title I classroom at Woodbury, back to my home school. I am also seeking a run for public office. So that will be, um, that was part of my reason for leaving this work. I have to admit, I really enjoyed this and I do feel that the personal contact and making those connections with new teachers is extremely valuable. And I'm just honored that Julie Thede is going to take over the the role of not only mentoring, but with the um, CPDL position with our specials classes such as PE music, art, and um, and the teacher librarians. And Julie will be a great addition to this and I think carry this program forward. And so Julie, is there anything you want to say?
Just that I'm really excited for this opportunity and I feel fortunate that I have been able to work with you, Sue, in the last few weeks. Sue has really helped with the transition, explaining the job responsibilities and the processes that she has set up. So that's been amazing that I feel like that'll really help the transition be smooth and help keep going and grow what she has started.
Julie, could you give the board um, some of your background?
Sure, absolutely. I've been with Marshalltown Schools for twelve years. Uh, I started with Bee actually at Anson as a kinder teacher and then a second grade teacher for five year, or um, seven years. And then the last five years, I've been at Woodbury as the instructional coach. And prior to that, I worked for Des Moines Public Schools.
Well, welcome, the new position.
Thank you.
Julie brings a great amount of experience to the, to the, uh, to the show. I think that's the last slide, Amy. I don't think there's anymore. Oh, I, this was a little bit, this is a lead-in into Dr. Stevenson's presentation. In her, some more she sent out last week, she talked about the work we have done in the mentoring program. And this quote just kind of, kind, it struck me because this is exactly what we have been trying to build in the last three years. And prior to that, our mentoring program has always been a strong program. It just moved into another realm when we had that daily um, release time position that could focus on people who had issues. We could go in and do coaching. Um, I worked with several teachers that maybe had to, had a difficult start and helped and and did some individual work with them. Um, but this really caught me as to what the goal and what it is that we want to move forward with in the program. So it worked out very timely. Dr. Stevenson, thank you for including that in your uh, in your notes.
Well, I think I just want to say, this is um, the seventh school district that I have served in as either a teacher or administrator, and I have never ever, and I'm not just saying this because it's Marshalltown, but I've never, I've never seen a system that's so invested in its new hires. Mentoring is a state requirement. So for new board members, if you're wondering, um, yes, we have to have a mentoring program. It's one of those assurances that we sign off on every year and it's critical um, for teachers to be in the mentor program so that they can convert their licensure to a standard license. Um, but what Marshalltown does is unique. I mean, I, I've just been so impressed. Um, before Sue, we had three um, teacher leaders, um, Kim Hurley, Erica Fenders, and um, Tim Johnson at the high school, who did this as like an extra job in addition to their real-time job and I, their real full-day job. And I just said, when our TLC budget had the ability to do so, I said, we need to hire someone who can focus on this work because you're talking about sixty-eight people, like that's a lot of people to manage, that's um, and to do it right. I mean, they all, they want, they're very individualized, they're from different generations and they have specific needs. Um, and Marshalltown is is not an uh, one of the easiest places to walk into, especially if you don't have experience teaching in a diverse school district. You might be working with students that you've never um, had to um, differentiate your lessons like, like you would have to for some of our newcomers or other students with special needs. So I'm just really proud of this program and how it's grown. Sue um, took a leap and left um, the librarian position at uh, Woodbury and and helped grow this um, into a halftime job. And I am more than confident that Julie's going to do the same. She um, was a new teacher in our system. She benefited from the mentoring program. She has been a mentor herself and an instructional coach in two different buildings. So I'm really confident that Sue's handing it off. We wish her the best of luck in her um, run for office and know that she'll do great things. Um, and we're still, we're always going back to the drawing board and looking at the feedback from the teachers and seeing, you know, what are they saying they need? And I wrote this last week because I've been doing a lot of thinking, given today's climate, about is classroom management really the word that we want to use? Because it implies that there's one adult in that room that manages everyone else. And I really think that given our diversity and the needs of our students, that if we focused much of our effort on how can we make students more engaged and connected and building a culture that um, every student feels welcome and wanted in. Um, that I think sometimes in those cases, the classroom management that we know of days past just falls into place much easier. So um, that's our mentoring program. Julie will be busy this summer. Um, tonight on the consent agenda, you approved mentors. So we, that's part of our TLC system and um, we'll continue to fill those sixty-eight matches. We have thirty-two or so on the agenda tonight. And those mentors get training too, and Julie will be working on that with um, possibly some collaboration from the AEA.
Very good.
For Sue or Julie before we leave mentoring?
Yes, just to say, oh, go ahead, Karina.
Okay. Um, so it's, my question is kind of similar to what mentoring is, but I'm glad this is something that it's um, required for us to do. I think it's a great program. Well, my question is more for those teachers that transfer um, to other schools or to other positions, like what is in place for those teachers to make them feel that um, that relation, to build that relationship with that other building? Is it, I know you don't have to go in depth as far as what a mentor um, to be in the mentor program because they're new to our district, because they wouldn't be. But they would be to either a position or a building. Are we, do we have something in place? Is there anything?
We do have it in place for teachers who come from another district. They go through one year of mentoring and that's a district choice. It is not a state requirement. But again, we feel that Marshalltown has uniqueness in um, our diversity and in the programs that we provide, and we want those teachers who come to us to have some background, especially in some of that sheltered instruction, scaffolding um, and differentiation, which is what we do for those teachers who maybe taught five years in East Marshall and is now coming to a Marshalltown building. When teachers move from building to building, we do not have a mentoring program for them. We count on um, their experiences within a different building in our system to aid them as they move forward because we have similarities. And if they were new, a new teacher in our system or one that transferred in, they should have gotten the mentoring when they came into the district the first time.
I think, Karina, just shortly, the, I am positive that if I'm a second grade teacher at Rogers and I want to transfer to kindergarten at Franklin, that Mick and Tim and our building principals are working with their instructional coaches to get those teachers off on the right foot because every school, while we are a system, every school is a little bit different and every grade level is just a little bit different. So they want to get them connected. They make sure when they accept those transfers and hire those people that they are fit in, that they will be well-received on the team of teachers, the PLC that they are joining. Um, and then I think they do work to kind of acclimate them. And I know we do that within our PLC system, like we've been, Julie has been mentoring um, Mary Brown that's moving to Woodbury and Sue is mentoring Julie. So even though they're not new to the district, we definitely ask people to um, to lend their expertise to the person that's going to be filling their shoes.
Great, thank you. Thank you.
Bob? I just wanted to say thanks, Sue, for all the work you've done. I, I think you've had an important role here and it seems like you're making a difference there from what you've reported. So we appreciate that.
Good. I, I definitely say I think that the quality of the people that are being hired um, is also has, has increased over the the last few years. I think that the systems that you're using, you can see it. And as I said, we have just some excellent quality people coming into our buildings. So thank you all for that work and the HR department and all of the administrators who go through that process to make sure that we're getting good fits for our students when we bring new teachers into the district.
The, the other thing I wanted to say to Julie is that um, I am also on the Tourism Committee, what used to be the Convention and Visitors Bureau uh, with the chamber. If, if there is an interest or desire for like a one-pager on the, there are something like forty-eight restaurants in town, plus I have connections in the cultural community. If that sort of, you know, something very simple were desired, I would get it to you.
Thank you. Yeah, that is something we'll definitely keep in mind, knowing that this year's new teacher orientation will have to look a little bit different. We will be doing the bus tour like Sue had done in the past, so something like that could be really beneficial for our new hires.
Cool.
Okay, Lisa, you had your own segue into your presentation, so we're ready for you now.
Excellent. Um, and mine is not nearly as long as the last two, so um, just a short, a couple-page document there for you to see. Um, so for new board members, um, just so you know, um, the teacher leadership and compensation system, which we call TLC, is also a state of Iowa um, historically funded program that we offer here in Marshalltown. Marshalltown was one of the first adopters. I believe this is year seven. Dr. Shudi can correct me. It's either six or seven of the system um, that they received the grant initially, and then it's um, been blended into everyone's school districts since then. So a plan was developed and then um, the, every June, the Department of Ed requires us to report out on how we're doing towards meeting the four goals. And so the goals you see of teacher retention, collaboration, professionalism, and student achievement are not goals that I set or that Marshalltown set. Those are goals that um, every school district in the state has to report board every summer. And then in the fall, um, the state reports like an overall look on how teacher leadership is impacting um, public education in Iowa. So what you see here is just a collection of information that I'll submit, but um, I, we're doing really good things. I think we're making some really nice growth. So the first goal you see is teacher retention, which Sue just talked about. Um, and though it says did not meet, I would like you to know that um, Bee teases me sometimes, but we have really high expectations. So my goals, I've set these goals really high um, that we're going to retain ninety percent of our teachers um, after one year um, and that we're going to retain sixty-six percent or two out of every three teachers after five years um, of hire here. So we did not meet those goals. We're getting closer and we increased from the report um, from a year ago, but um, we're going to keep the goal where it is and and keep striving for that number. Um, and then the CPDL, which was Sue, or in this, in next year, Julie, um, that's one of the primary focus areas as well as all the mentors that we hire. So the TLC funding that follows the mentors' work as well as part of Julie, Julie or Sue's salary um, is really heavily vested in that first goal. The second goal is collaboration, and this is the lengthiest of all of them, but um, believe it or not, there are some systems out there where teachers do not collaborate or not collaborative with each other. Um, and that is not the case here. Um, this goal was met at a hundred percent when I came to the district and we've maintained that every year. So we are able to, with confidence, say that every single teacher in this system um, regularly, regularly collaborates um, with others um, through, it's called different things at different levels within our system. Um, and sometimes it happens in a forty-five-minute, you know, planning period, and sometimes it's a meeting after school or an all-day PD. So you'll see there kind of a description of what is happening when people are collaborating. And if you go down to the second page, or go up, I suppose, there is a chart, I believe, yes, uh, that kind of lists out in raw numbers how many um, of these things actually happened. And these continued during closure. Um, so teachers were still having their weekly um, PLC meetings. They were reviewing their lessons and their curriculum. Mentors were still having meetings with their mentees. Um, we've still had after-school PLC meetings, et cetera. And then goal three um, is called professional growth by the state. We also met this goal. So one of the what do you call it, requirements of TLC by the state is that twenty-five percent of our certified staff, so that's four hundred and nineteen, twenty-some uh, teachers and any given year, that twenty-five percent of them hold a addition that 25% of them hold an addition in a role, in addition to their teaching contract that is in the teacher leadership system. So we continue to increase our participation in that number. We're up to 38% of our teachers receive an extra contract of, or an extra, I can hear Paulette correcting me right now. They receive a stipend to either be a mentor or an instructional coach or a curriculum and professional development leader. And that's great. I'm just really happy that so many teachers within Marshalltown want to help support each other and also our new hires, for sure. So that was Goal Three. And then the last goal, which was on the last page, is student achievement. I think it's Page Three. Thanks, Amy. So in student achievement, on the state report, I actually marked that we partially met that because what that is really saying is, so if we retain people, if we give them professional opportunities to be leaders and they collaborate with each other, do those three things lead to an increase in student achievement? And I had to say partially met because in some grade levels from last year to this year, and granted, this year means winter reading and math scores. So that's different and odd because normally I would be sharing our state assessment results with you, but we don't have those because of COVID. So we were instructed to make the best of it, and I tried. Some, in some grade levels, fourth grade in particular, we did increase our achievement from last year to this year. And then in some grade levels, we did not, like eighth grade, for example. And you've heard those results earlier during the winter when we shared out student reporting. So our goal is for next year to have a met underneath all four. But for this year, given everything that's happened, I'm pretty pleased with the efforts and the work that not only the teacher leaders and the, and the central office TLC people, but the administrators too, have really, you know, dug in and focused on this work with me alongside all of us.
You know, considering that we've been talking about teacher retention, and I'm looking at this data, have we disaggregated teacher retention, secondary versus elementary? Do we have a higher turnover rate at secondary level?
We have not done that in my office. I'm not sure if, when they do their exit, voluntary exit interviews, if that's looked at by Dr. Ryan or others. I, my anecdotal observation is no, Jan, it's about the same. It seems like we're at all levels all the time.
All the time, yeah. And then the other question I would have was participation with the instructional coaches. Is there more participation at the elementary level than at the secondary level?
I think every teacher has an opportunity to interact with their instructional coaches on a weekly basis because they serve as part of the professional learning communities that every teacher is a part of. I would definitely say it's a different environment at the high school. It's, there are just many more teachers per coach. So I would say probably a secondary, a high school teacher would say that they have less interactions maybe with an instructional coach just due to the sheer number of people that they're supporting.
Right. And the diversity of discipline and...
Yeah, that's a good point, true. And this year, I was really excited because we just approved back in, I think, April to hire a special ed instructional coach because that was a noted area when we do our annual TLC review around January or February. That's something that comes up repeatedly from our staff is that they feel like the special ed teachers need a lot of support and want support and that they aren't as equipped to help them as they are some of the other teachers. So I'm looking forward to seeing what impact that that role or position will have on our system.
Other questions for Lisa?
Oh, I'm going to ask it anyway. I'm going to try to figure out how to articulate this. But in the process of doing this and coming up with these results, in a paragraph or less, what do you think would be the most important things that you are learning?
Me personally or us, the TLC system?
However you want to answer that.
Okay.
About this, about this topic, obviously.
Oh, wow.
Instead of, yeah.
Yeah, I would say that when we invest in our teachers, so when we invest in time or resources to help them troubleshoot things that are happening in their classrooms and, you know, really help them meet their individual goals or their grade levels goals, their building attendance that are playing goals. When we put the money, like the TLC system is, behind that work and are very intentional about it, it has a magnificent effect. Have you seen some of the, some of the school achievement results? And you'll hear from the principals about this in a couple of weeks. But we've had schools, you know, that have moved one or two rankings in one year in the positive direction. You know, when you've got lots of mentors and coaches and administrators all working as a team, and then we have our CPDLs supporting all of them simultaneously. So I think it's one of those things, Bob, that when we get the right people in the right places and support them with the training and resources they need, that we can meet all of our goals.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Paulette, we're over to you.
All right. The next thing on the agenda is the renewal of the superintendent's contract for the term of July 1st, 2020 through June 30th of 2023. Your contract renewal.
Questions for Paulette? May I have a motion to approve the superintendent contract amended for Dr. Schutte?
Move, Heitman.
Seconded McGinnis.
Heitman, McGinnis, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. Motion carries 7-0. Lynn, you've been waiting patiently in the wings.
Yeah, thanks. I have two things tonight, and I don't think they'll take too long. The first is meal prices for the 2021 school year. We are looking at the paid lunch equity tool again in developing our premise for increasing prices. And for those of you who don't really know what the paid lunch equity tool is, that it's a guide that's given by the USDA that helps schools set lunch prices that would keep the price of a lunch for a paying student equitable to that of the price determined of a free meal by the USDA. So we would recommend for next school year to increase the paid lunch price by a dime. That would bring the paid lunch price to $2.75 for those students at Miller and High School. And then the breakfast would follow that, which would be $1.80 for Miller and High School for next school year. The adult meal price will be increased to $3.85, which is a 10-cent increase from last year. And that is driven by the USDA based on the free reimbursement that we receive for meals and then also considering the commodity value that's put towards every meal. So the minimum price for an adult meal for next year is $3.85. Also, I want to increase the price of milk by a dime. We haven't increased the price of a carton of milk since I've been with the district. So that would be nearly eight years. And I think that over time, we've seen prices rise enough that it's justified at this time to increase the cost of a carton of milk for a single milk purchase. And then no change to the reduced paid price for meals that is set by the USDA, and it holds steady at 30 cents for breakfast and 40 cents for lunch.
Now, with the reduced price, is that what they're paying? Or are you reducing it by 3 cents?
That is the out-of-pocket cost for the student.
Other questions for Lynn? This topic was vetted at Finance Committee. Do the members of the Finance Committee have anything to input?
No, I mean, we discussed it, and it seems like this isn't an appropriate thing to do.
I will confess too that I was unable to make that meeting, so.
May I have a motion to approve the 2020-2021 fiscal year meal and milk prices as presented?
Miller, move for approval.
Falltus, second.
Miller, Falltus, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries 7-0.
Thank you. And then I guess we'll just roll right into the next topic here, which is the proposed policy for meal donation allocation. So we, meaning the Finance Committee and I, also talked about this and had a lot of discussion over the goals for this policy. The goals for this policy are really to just outline a fair, equitable, and objective way to guide the distribution of donated funds to students' accounts for those students who are unable to pay for meals at school due to their income or other outlined circumstance. And in the collaboration with the Finance Committee, this policy was drafted, and we really feel that it will help those who are needing it. And it also provides us a way to maintain, you know, the positive relationships that we strive for with our stakeholders on such a difficult topic. Do you have any questions regarding the policy?
So I do. You've got it that the, the funds are distributed, prioritizing the people with the largest debt. So are you paying off one debt at a time? Or are you distributing a certain amount to that largest debt? And then spreading it out to, how does that work, I guess?
So we had some discussion regarding this, and we all agreed that there would need to be a certain amount of money in the fund before we could allocate it to any student account. Currently, our largest debt owed to us is like in the ballpark of $400. So we hope that we can really help those who need it without having to put very strict limits on it when we have that cushion of $5,000 in that fund. Hopefully, that would be enough to really make an impact on the debt and also help several students at a time.
Well, as someone who taught in Marshalltown and, you know, worked with the school nurse and agencies to help students who couldn't pay for their lunches, I really appreciate what you're doing here and the people that donate this money.
Yeah, I have to put a plug in there to our community. We have an amazing community that, you know, really supports our student body, and that's a really awesome thing to have in Marshalltown.
This is proposed as a regulation for board policy. So may I have a motion to move this policy toward boards' regulation towards the first reading at the July 13th, 2020 meeting?
So move McGinnis?
Unteed McGinnis, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. Motion carries 7-0. Thanks, Lynn.
Thank you.
Paulette, we're back to you.
Back to me, all right. So you may remember when we were discussing the Tennesse Court that there is a specific process that we, that boards have to go through for a public improvement project. The size of the high school parking lot does qualify for that public improvement process. So that's what we're working through here. What we need to do is set a public hearing for the July 13th Board Meeting to, for the board to have that public hearing and then approve the specs, the estimated cost. And what else? Help me out here, Chuck.
Just to take a look at what the addendums are, what the, there's a base bid. There will also be some, some other alternative bids.
Questions for either Paulette or Chuck?
How will this meeting be advertised to public?
Pardon?
How does the public know about this meeting?
We are required to post notices to bidders, and we are required to publish the notice of public hearing in the newspaper.
In the newspaper, okay.
The public hearing gets posted in the newspaper. The notice to bidders also gets posted in the newspaper, but it gets posted in construction plan rooms and stuff, too.
So if people wanted to join in on this meeting and needed this link, where would they find it? I mean, how would they get into it?
On our webpage, on the Board Docs link.
On Board Docs link on the webpage, okay.
It would be the same as for any of the other public hearings that we've had or public comment. They would need to notify Paulette, and then they would be listed as a participant and move to a panelist by Amy as those portions of the meeting came.
This is about the parking lot. So they would tell Paulette if they wanted to join before they joined? Or just if they wanted to make a comment?
They want to make comments. They need to notify her before 4 o'clock on the day of the meeting. All of that is listed at the beginning of every board meeting in that section that's like a half a page long. It also lists the Zoom link. May I have a motion to approve the resolution and to set the time, date, and location for a public hearing?
So move McGinnis.
Second, Unteed.
McGinnis, Unteed, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The motion carries 7-0. Thanks, Chuck and Paulette. Paulette, we're on to cost recovery transfer.
All right. So the nutrition fund is primarily funded by federal dollars. And there's, there's a concept with federal funding called indirect cost recovery. So we can only code to the nutrition fund the direct costs of that fund. So the salaries and benefits, the cost of food. We can't code to the nutrition fund like costs for utilities or for garbage pickup or for payroll. The way that we capture some of those costs is through indirect cost recovery. The Department of Ed calculates an indirect cost rate for each school district each year. And there is a specific formula that we can apply to the nutrition fund revenue that will allow us or calculate for us a maximum amount that can be transferred from the nutrition fund back to the general fund to cover those indirect costs. We don't know what that amount will be yet because we accrue revenues and expenditures through August 30th. So what I like to do is just ask the board for permission because we have to have board... because we have to have board approval for an inter-fund transfer. Ask the board for permission to transfer up to the maximum amount. When we know what that maximum amount is, Lynn and I will get together and we'll discuss what a reasonable number would be. And so then we can make that transfer. So we're asking for board approval to transfer indirect, for indirect cost recovery from the nutrition fund back to the general fund. This would be applied to fiscal year 20, the year that is just wrapping up right now.
This was also vetted with the Finance Committee. Sean, anything to add?
It was, and Paulette, I may be misremembering, did you have some estimate of a number?
Yes, when I looked at the numbers just through the April revenue that we had received, it would have been that the trans, maximum transfer would be about 153,000. What we don't know yet, since we've been in this COVID crisis, whether that federal, federal funding that we, we have received during the COVID crisis will be able to be used in that calculation. We're still waiting to find that out. So it could be around 150,000, but we, we won't, we also don't want to transfer too much out of there to put the nutrition fund in a precarious financial position, so we will evaluate that, you know, when we have final numbers for the year.
A district would generally only consider doing this when their food service budget is in a strong fiscal position, and so kudos to Lynn and Paulette for continuing to to have us in a position where we could do such a transfer and obviously this will help our cash position on the general fund side as well, which we know that we can always use strengthen support in the cash position part.
Questions? May I have a motion to make an inter-fund transfer from the nutrition fund to the general fund up to the maximum authorized by the calculation for indirect cost recovery?
Heyman, so moved.
Falltus second.
Heitman Faltes, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The motion carries seven zero. Thanks, Paulette and Lynn.
You.
No board policies, please note. It probably will never happen again. No review of board policies. Anything of note in communications, Mr. Sodders?
Well, I just wanted to give a short update on Facebook following, so looking at the last two months, so all of April and all of May. In April, I think unsurprisingly, we had quite a, quite a bit of so you can think of post-reaches, all the eyeballs that, all the pairs of eyeballs that saw any of our content from our Facebook page. That number was 106,000, just about even, 106,700, which is pretty exceptional. That number went down in May, and I think that's because April was full of various updates that people were waiting eagerly on, such as school closure due to COVID-19 and other updates related to COVID-19. In May, we're at roughly half that, we're at 56,282 people reached overall. In addition, we have about 20 more likes between that, from April to May, we gained 20 more likes. And so I just wanted to give that short update on Facebook, which is our by a pretty good margin, our most engaged with social media platform.
Thank you. Looking at reminders, our next regular board meeting will be Monday, July 13th. But before that time, we have two boardwork sessions for the Building Center data plans. One on the 22nd and one on the 30th, and those will all be Zoom meetings. And the class of 2020 graduates from the high school on June 28th, from 2:30 to 4:00. Looking at committee reports, is there anything else from the Finance Committee that we haven't already discussed?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, just a quick, quick note, not necessarily from the Finance Committee, but you may have heard that the legislative legislative session ended this weekend, and on a positive note, they did not change the SSA rate for next year. So that remained at 2.3%, so that was good news out of Des Moines.
Indeed. Acer Committee this morning, Theron, can you enlighten us?
Sure. B did a masterful job as always facilitating the Acer Committee meeting. It was actually very well attended, so that was nice. We didn't have any of our county supervisors participating, but the county engineer and Nan Benson also participated, so Paul talked a lot about the work moving forward on the North Center Street Bridges, which has created a detour for the good part of this year. He's very hopeful that things will keep moving along in hopes to possibly complete that work before going into the winter as we're entering in. He also spoke about concerns relative to reduced reduction in budget related to the road use tax fund, which is tied indirectly with taxation with gas usage. And they're anticipating that could drop their revenues from that anywhere from 25 to 30%. Nan Benson talked about the ongoing work with the courthouse, and although they've run into some roadblocks, the work continues to move forward with some internal renovations. She said they're on the verge of seeking bids, I believe also for the Annex Building, which is Kitty Corner where they've done the elections to be updated so that city offices can be repurposed or reinstated over there in the future. Jessica Kinzer from the city indicated also some budgetary concerns moving forward with a local option, option sales tax, hotel motel tax, revenues. Said their construction work is moving along. They're a little bit behind the timeline on the Coliseum. They've uncovered some unforeseen issues with the aged building, but they're hoping that it'll be in a position to open, be done and open in early 2021. She also mentioned the council revisiting the land swap topic, the land swap being the Anson Park, portion of Anson Park for bicentennial park with the school district and the council voted to move that process forward to bring it back at the table and then move it forward for the future. There's a number of things that will have to happen for that come to fruition, particularly on the city's end. The AA, Kim Schwartz was there and she introduced us, Kim is retiring, and introduced us to Jen Seacrest, who will be overseeing the Marsh Town office. Lisa and I have had a lot of experience with Jen, especially in the recent past since she got hired with the AA as she's done great work for the Return to Learn. Their offices are continuing to remain closed and they're working virtually until at least August, but Kim will be a great asset to have on the Acer Board. Robin Lillanfall talked about they're continuing to work, just like the school district, to figure out a return to school plan for the fall. The feedback that they've received from their students very much has been very strong about wanting to be back on campus and not continue to learn remotely to the extent possible, so in the least, I think MCC and Iowa Valley is looking at some form of hybrid approach, especially with the number of classes that they offer that require hands-on learning and that sort of thing. The MCC or the Iowa Valley Board recently approved and updated or new strategic plan at their most recent board meeting, so I'm sure we'll be hearing more about that. Moving forward, Lynn Oberding from the Chamber indicated how things have been going with the Chamber offices working remotely, and they're starting to bring people back into the office, although they're not really having open to business public access other than by appointment thus far. She said they're working very closely with the businesses during the reopening of area businesses and really helping promote people to be patient and polite as it relates to what is opening, what isn't opening, etc. I think the only Chamber function which right now is still scheduled to occur is their annual golf outing in August, I believe, or maybe they've moved that to September. And they've also done some work with area event planners to try to talk about how they can work with CDC guidelines and recommendations as it relates to local tourism events and things of that nature. Amy Piper from Iowa State University Extension indicated to us that they're doing restructuring with their regional offices, and so Marshalltown will fall into a new region which incorporates more of the counties that are north and east of us. I think versus the western, you know, we used to stretch all the way to Boone County, and then Boone is now going to be with counties that are further west, such as Carroll, Green, etc. So we'll have a new Regional Director, Ann Tidor, rather than Rich Rogge, who emanates out of Boone. And then she also talked about despite, despite the state fair being canceled, county fairs are still trying to do a modified fair in relationship to certain events, one of which is the 4H judging, so she talked to us about how they're going to do that in a safe and limited way so that kids can have the contests that they're accustomed to, whether it be with livestock or projects and have those things judged in a safer, responsible way at the county level. B, was there anything to note that I missed?
No, it was a full, almost 90-minute meeting, so it was information-packed.
I would add to what Paulette said about the legislature too, as of late, there was some legislation on the sales tax, which was potentially going to put even further restrictions on the ability to use those funds for athletic facility improvements, and as it turned out, none of those things went through. The only thing that really happened was clarity on what it takes to get signature petitions for revisiting or open to public vote, those types of projects, and the issue was there was some lack of clarity over, since those elections now oftentimes are happening in conjunction with the general election, there was some concern as to whether it's based on the percentage or the numbers from the general election or the school board election that's held at the same time as the general election, and so it's based on school board election numbers, not general election numbers, which will lessen the number of petitions needed or in order to have a petition go through. This was really a response, as you probably saw in the local press, to the Des Moines project, to their private public partnership with Drake University and some issues that emanate with their local high schools and facilities. But it was not created to be retroactive either, so it will, going forward, the number of petition signatures you need will be predicated on your most recent school board election.
Thank you. Any items for future agendas? What have we done tonight to make education better for the students in the Marshalltown District?
I really enjoyed hearing the words on the nurse, Nurse Stacy. And then I really do like the mentoring program. I think it's very rich and I think it's very beneficial. I hear good things about it.
Thank you.
They also declared the color guard uniforms obsolete.
Did you not like them?
I think it, I think it advances our goals down the field.
I see.
And we put into place some, some safeguards to make sure that the children do have access to lunch.
Thank you all. In the near future, like within a few weeks, you will receive the, an attachment from me regarding the board self-evaluation. We do that every year in June-ish, July. We use that information to set board goals when we're meeting to also set superintendent goals. We need to do that in a face-to-face setting, so that may have to wait until August or whenever we can do face-to-face contact as opposed to a Zoom meeting because there's quite a bit of discussion that goes on during that time. The information that I will give to you is twofold. There is the survey, which asks you to rank how you see some items that the board does or doesn't do and where you would place them in order of priority. It also gives you the opportunity to make suggestions and comments in an expanding box as it was in Theron's evaluation. There will be a short, one, two-page article about the eight habits of highly effective boards. And one of the questions that you will be asked in the survey is in response to information in that article, so be sure and do both pages when you're looking at it. I want to be able to give you plenty of time to look at it because I know it's the first time that some of you will be going through this. We have two meetings at the end of June for school reports, which will take some time on your part to read documents ahead of time and be prepared for those meetings. So my question to you is, do you want this, the board self-evaluation during that time, or do you want me to wait until the 1st of July?
Probably the 1st of July.
Anybody else?
I'd be good with that.
Okay, I will send them out to you after our second school presentations night. I'll give you a couple of weeks to return it to me, and in preparation for our meeting together and setting board goals, I will include all of your comments verbatim. So please refrain from things that you don't want printed on the So please refrain from things that you don't want printed on the front page of the newspaper.
Can I, I'm sorry, you, you, in this mention, you evoked to me a, a, a thought about future agendas and that would be, uh, you know, I don't need it, I certainly don't need it now, but is there, is there a thought to how it is that, that social distancing will happen on buses and in classrooms and then also, um, what happens if, um, we see some significant spike in, uh, coronavirus illness in the county?
Well, I know the central office administration and building administrators are all working on that. So I'm sure that we'll get that information as soon as they've determined that. Theron, any comments?
Yeah, we've had some discussion about how best to inform and or update the board as um, we get some of those things ironed out and developed. That's all part of the return to learn planning that right now we're gearing our efforts towards, uh, the assurances that we have to be able to submit to the state by July first. Our intentions are to adhere to the CDC recommendations. So some of which is what Bob mentioned, so we're, we're working through all of that right now.
Thank you.
So at this point, no decision, no firm decision has been made about how you're going to, how things will look in the fall?
Correct.
That's good to know, because that's a question that's been coming up.
You will be happy to know that the legislature also passed a COVID flexibility bill this weekend. And in that bill, um, they give the authority to close school this coming year to the school board, allows a school board to authorize a closure of the school district or any attendance center if the governor proclaims a public health emergency due to an outbreak of COVID nineteen.
Yippee. My quote for this evening, um, comes from Herman Hess, who is a German author, a poet, a painter. So he's right up Bob's alley in the arts and, arts and stuff.
I've read his book Sid Hartha.
Okay. Well, this does take a little bit of thought, so it's short, but I'll let you think about it until we meet again. He says, "Some of us think holding on makes us strong, but sometimes it's the letting go." May I have a motion to adjourn?
So move McGinnis.
McGinnis Hernandez, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no?
No.
The motion carries six, one. Shame on you, Bob.